Uh oh.
All right, I'll tell you the rest later. Yeah, no, broke.
Getting that time areas.
Call the work session meeting of the Indiana Borough Council for September to order. We are going to be voting tonight, so we need to call the roll. Can you see that place? Here.
Here.
Bowser.
Here.
Ford.
Present.
Very present.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Steelman.
Here.
Taylor.
Present.
Warnock. Ten present, two absent.
I had a notification from Jonathan Warnock that he is ill and thought it was wise not to share that with us. Changes to the agenda?
Yes, we're gonna just put under Pat's report.
Okay. All right. Then it's time for public comment as the members of the public who would like to address the council.
Dan.
Please. Put your name and your address and remember that you're limited to three minutes.
My name is Daniel DeFloria, D E capital F L O R I A. And I live 235 South Fourteenth Street in the borough. It's about a block and a half from Eisenhower School. The, I'm asking or petitioning Borough Council to modify quiet time on Sunday. I've been living here for nine years and
it's finally got to the point where I'm babysitting four grandkids.
And with school starting, there's lots of activities on the weekends because that's when they can fit them in. My particular case, my daughter lives in Strongstown. And some of the activities are as far away as Altoona for her kids and other ones, they're up here. So on Sunday, she called me and she said, I'd like you to watch the kids in the afternoon. I said, I can't, I gotta cut the grass. And she said, oh, cut the grass in the morning. I said, I can't cut the grass in the morning. It's quiet time. And that's usually the reaction I get from other people. Say, what in the world's quiet time? Why can't you cut the grass? So I thought about it and I said, you know, this has come up before. A lot of us are early risers and we would like to have more hours in the day to do what we want to do. And from seven o'clock to one o'clock is, in my opinion, too big of a chunk of time to take away from the weekend. So my proposal is to modify it from seven o'clock in the morning till 10 o'clock. That'll satisfy those at one quiet time and those of us that want to get a head start on yard work or whatever. They can do it early. So that's really my petition. I have no other. I, I don't know where the history of it came from. It's almost like it's a carryover from the old blue laws. I don't know, but depending on how you feel, I'd like you to consider it.
I do.
Yeah.
But that would be the logical place for that to come. Any changes in the ordinance follow a certain path. They go from a committee to the council. Have to be recommended to the council. The council has to vote to advertise. And then we would vote change. So if you wanted to pursue it. The court here is the chair. We'd have to look up.
PM. He wants amended to seven to 10 AM. You mean AM, not PM, right?
In the morning till 10 in the morning because right now it's seven in the morning till one in the afternoon.
That's just on Sunday.
Yeah, I think it is.
Sundays.
We'll add it to the, we'll add it to our next agenda for community development. If you would like to join us, it'd be great, but we can also take it into consideration at the next meeting.
And that'll be Monday, October the 17th at 7:00 PM.
Yeah.
If you'd like to come.
Yeah, it was just yesterday.
It was the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you were to send an email that rather than needing to come to the meeting, if you were to send an email again, the way spend your time coming to a second meeting, appreciate your coming tonight. If you were to send an email to maybe our Borough Manager or Ben about this issue, I think that probably would suffice to get it on the agenda. It sounds like you don't necessarily need to come back again.
It's under ordinance.
Unless you want to, please do come, but.
It's under ordinance 275-3J. And it puts the hours and that's hours are there.
As you're someone else.
And I live at 675 East Pike in White Township. And I'm here to talk about the rain garden in the Eighth Street Lot, Eighth Street Parking Lot. All of the plants were removed recently and that was designed as a rain garden and a bioinfiltration trench. And I just wanted to say that that, that the plant material in that parking lot is part of the stormwater uptake system. That they're designed with plant material in them so that the plants can help take up the, take up the water. Also their root system provides infiltration areas for the stormwater to infiltrate into the soil. And the plants, albeit a little bit, but and they intercept water before it hits the ground as well. So there's a reason and a science behind it. I did not design, I'm a landscape architect and I did not design that rain garden. But I just wanted to put in a, in a plea for the plants to be returned in some way so that the system could work. And, and I would also advise to speak with the designers of that system so that you can get the plants right. Because they've already calculated that and what plants might be the best plants for that system and the quantity of plants for that system. So that's all that I had. You're welcome.
Are there others who would like to address this? Moving on, I don't believe we need an executive session. Oh, and before the executive session, the main topic of tonight's meeting is presentation from the police department.
Just wait until Kyle assists us with putting that on full screen if it's gonna go on full screen and oh, there we go. Kyle has given me quick instructions on how this PowerPoint system works on these televisions. This is my first time using it, so I apologize if it's a little sloppy. This year, as in every past year since my tenure as chief, I've given council a mid-year review of police department activities. So this mid-year review is actually ends June, the last day of June. This presentation normally takes place in August, which gives me the month of July to prepare. But August meeting was filled with some other important issues for the borough. So the police review occurs in September. But as you look through the data, just keep in mind that this is data from the end of June. So I do not have any data past June to share with everyone. Also in this presentation at the request of members of council is some data on our demographics of citizen encounters within the borough. And to the best of my knowledge, this is the first time that something like this has been done within our police department, at least in my history. And the first time that I've had an opportunity to report out anything publicly. But it is timely. It's relevant to other discussions that are occurring in the borough. It's, it's transparent and it's intended to build trust. My request of every member of council is that if there are any questions, comments or thoughts on the data presented, as opposed to discussing it today in this forum, that we discuss it at the October Public Safety Meeting. And I have the agreement of Public Safety Chairman Lancaster, Mayor Simmons and Public Safety Committee to open that meeting to a conversation on the presentation tonight. So I would ask for your respect in that regard. There's gonna be a lot of data. I'm certain that there's gonna be perhaps some questions, but I'd like time to prepare best responses to the questions you have because the information is simply too important for me to try to make any comment that I'm not prepared to make tonight. So without further ado. Mission being of our police department, the Indiana Borough Police Department exists to enhance the quality of life for our citizens. We are committed to providing the highest levels of service while focusing on safety and comfort. We're guided by the core values of honor, integrity and respect for all persons. That's very important. Our mission is at the core of everything that the Indiana Borough Police Department does. Mission statement was changed in 2019. It was a collective effort of my tenure as chief and every member of the police department. When we talk about what's truly important to our public safety effort in the borough. And the intent was to craft a mission statement that was succinct to the point and focused on the things that drive positive value. So that being said, if all of us are acting in ways that support the mission, our path should be fairly wide open and straightforward.
The challenges that are reported on 2020 and 2021, continue on patterns.
2022, it's important that you all know that nothing is becoming easier for us in the world of public safety. And I have a few illustrations of that. Number one, what I sense are deep political divides. COVID-19 is still with us and public trust and peace has been shaken, if not shattered by events in the past years. And these are all things that are not healed, none of them today. So I did want to make certain that everyone knows that there are things outside of the traditional public safety realm that are impacting the way that we maneuver in our public safety effort. Some of those things are as follows. We are constantly navigating
opportunities to mitigate potential for school violence.
We have opioid epidemic where, where dangerous drugs are becoming far too prevalent in all of our communities. Mental wellness are issues that we're thinking that we're dealing with. We're having still the bottom center picture is, is meant to illustrate some sanctioned parties that your Indiana Borough Police Department deals with on a fairly frequent basis. The top center picture is Northern Appalachian Folk Festival two years ago. That's a picture on Philadelphia Street. And then the bottom right corner is meant to illustrate our traffic safety program, which for year after year is a credit to Lieutenant Eric Slavinsky and members of the Indiana Borough Police Department. We've been awarded the Platinum Award for AAA for traffic safety. That's something that we take very seriously. So these are all the things on a day-to-day basis that are forefront in our mind. All of them require much planning. Far, far more planning than the encounters that you see on the street that may be five or 10 minutes. There is no event that's inherently safe. There's no public event that's inherently safe. They all require planning. They all require a group effort. They all require extensive training. And so Indiana Borough being a town of special events, this is no small task for the police department, but not only the police department, also for the, the public works department, for the code department, for the parking department. If it looks simple, we appreciate it, but it is not simple and we can never take for granted that they are, again, nationally, locally, regionally inherently unsafe. Or tar, could be targets for violence. Not that anything in Indiana borough is inherently unsafe.
So this is how your police department is countering that.
We're countering our focus on some of the dangers in society with our focus on some of the more positive things. So these photos are meant to illustrate the other ways in which the police department engages. Your officers are always going to be seen in our Little League fields. We're in our schools with Axel. We are having National Night Out to try and engage more with the community. And we're leading parades and sports team celebrations through Indiana Borough. All these things I believe are also important to our public safety, peace, safety and comfort mission because they all build community. They all build relationships. And they're all capable positive impact. And certainly I don't want to underestimate this and at the core in the present, when you go to these events, you can have a relative certainty that there's gonna be a police officer nearby. And we hope that that drives comfort as opposed to driving concern.
Here's fast, I give you a breakdown of council's prior breakdown of police department. As far
our organizational chart and this year I wanted to do the same. You'll see our organizational chart a little different this year than past years. There's not significant red on this. So as of today, certainly we don't want to take this for granted, but the police department is staffed to complement.
So you see that we have four patrol sergeants.
They each have oversight over, over a platoon. And then we have a detective sergeant that has oversight over the detectives. Administrative assistant, Lieutenant Slavinsky, myself and Mayor Simmons.
This is the police department. I would like to make this comment before I go any further. The need for professional skill with compassion.
These service efforts have never been greater than today. And we're here for everyone, never against, although our jobs at times put us in negative situations. That is not our goal. So peace, safety and comfort are 2022 report. We've handled 62 noise investigations or disorderly gathering investigations. And again, this is of June, 44 animal complaints, 49 civil complaints. We have recovered or investigated 38 pieces of lost property and we've directed traffic for numerous reasons 94 times. 16 death or suicide deaths and/or suicide attempts. 94 burglar and fire alarm responses. 83 incidents of domestic violence or PFA investigations, which are protection from abuse order investigations.
We have handled 88 burglary theft and fraud investigations. 70 incidents of disorderly conduct or harassment, 44 criminal mischief investigations, 26 DUI RS.
We've captured 13 fugitives. We've investigated 95 accidents. We've investigated 13 sexual assaults. And we've handled 29 or excuse me, 26 incidents of trespass.
They discomfort in the midst of all of our peace efforts and all of our safety efforts we have done, we have done again. June 223 security checks, 896 school patrols, 116 house of worship patrols, 232 medical emergencies we've responded to. We have conducted 85 welfare checks. 160 reports of suspicious activity have been investigated by the police department and we've investigated 73 road complaints.
Tool for community comfort is led by Sergeant Jeff Hoag and his partner Axel. So I don't want to underestimate to anybody how important Axel's been to the police department. It helps us engage in so many different ways. It changes dynamics of conversations from perhaps fright, concern, trauma to a moment of happiness, not only in the lives of our officers, but also in the lives of, of our citizens. Axel's been used time and time again, both proactively and reactively. He's helped our partners in the law enforcement world as far away as Johnstown, Pennsylvania. He's in our schools every day. He greets school kids every day. And on sensitive investigations, he has always deployed as a tool, not only for our younger population, but for our, also our adult population.
So our department activity year to date, I broke this out in four years. 2019, as of this presentation, you're working with 4,900, 96 calls. 2022, year to date, same timeframe, we've handled 4,922 calls.
So not significantly different in many ways, shape or form from where we were in 2019. In 2020 and 2021, there were slightly higher call totals. In 2020, I would just mention that because of the pandemic, we were, as we were shut down, your police department was very active in business security checks and making sure that our businesses that were unattended were safe in the overnight hours for anyone interested in doing harm. So I believe that in large part, the spike in 2020 is due to our proactive efforts during COVID to keep our community safe while we were inside. 19, again, we handled 4,996 calls and we ended the year at 9,555 calls. And you can see across the bottom. So I would expect my end of year report or the beginning of year report for 2023 would have close to 10,000 calls handled by your police department.
So here's the data portion of the presentation. Indiana boroughs population of US since 2020, 14,000. I U P's population is private on college traction, about 4,000. Indiana boroughs population by percentage is 87% white, 5.7 or 6% black, 2.5% Asian, 4.3% other. By comparison, I U P's population by percentage is 72% white, 10% black, 1.3% Asian and 15.7% others.
Link that I U P's website led me to when I was seeking their demographic information. So this is a three-year review of our traffic stops by age. So this slide is intended to illustrate that our motorists between 16 and 25 years of age are stopped 32% of the time a police officer makes a traffic stop. Our residents 26 to 35 years of age are stopped 27% of the time. When an officer engages in a traffic stop, 36 to 45 is 13%, 46 to 55 is 12%, 55 to 65 is 9%. And we are engaging on traffic stops are 66 plus population around 7% of the time. And again, this bears itself out over a three-year period. By sex in that same three-year period, 60% of our traffic stops are male operators. 40% of our traffic stops in the past three years are female operators. Our traffic stops by race. And again, this is a three-year average. 89% of our traffic stops are white operators. 10% of our traffic stops over that three-year period are black. And 1% is other, which encounters, I believe, Asian, our Asian population.
81% of our DUI drug arrests for that three-year period. And now this is a conversation that we've had already with council.
I did provide the next two slides to council members as we were talking about the marijuana, potential marijuana ordinance. So marijuana arrests by race in 2019. It was 18 and 10. Before, but far smaller numbers in marijuana arrest by race than in any other demographic or any other slide that I've shown. And then marijuana arrests by residential status. This was also a question that was posed at one point in time during that conversation. So in 2019. And 2021, it was eight residents as compared to 11. So the value of data. One, transparency and accountability to build public trust. Number two, understanding how we engage with our community is important. Understanding how our community is interacting with us is important. And understanding how our community is interacting with each other is important.
Organization, understanding where we, where we were, where we are.
And where we need to go makes us a stronger organization and makes all of your officers better equipped and never weaker.
Police department needs to be constantly asking these questions. What is going on with the community? Where are its immediate public safety? What are our long-term public safety goals? How do our actions impact those stakeholders? How would we maximize?
Positive impacts. How can we best serve our community? How can we best position our community for tomorrow? And how do we stay constantly prepared for ever-present dangers?
We always have law, we must operate.
There's a constant recognition, the danger exists for officers in the community. Crimes are occurring daily within Indiana Borough. Our laws need enforced. They need enforced by the men and women of your police department in a fair and equitable way. And officers are always at risk. And I can never underestimate that last point. We are always at risk from both the known and the unknown.
So my commitment to 2022 is gonna be hurting my community.
Personal growth opportunities for your employees to enhance recruitment efforts, employee wellness and increase technology.
Today's community successes were achieved by yesterday's decision.
The immediate have the impact that some of the more long-range and strategic goals that we have will have on the community. And we exist, of course, to enhance the quality of life of every member of Indiana Borough, every visitor, every business owner, every business visitor, every student, every teacher, every educator, every single person across every single spectrum in Indiana Borough who enters Indiana Borough. And I just like to reiterate for you that our mission is to enhance the quality of life of our citizens with a focus on high-level service, peace, safety and comfort with honor, integrity and respect for all persons.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Run through there. We, you know, our motion was to authorize Nicole, the Borough Manager, to execute the 2023 minimum municipal obligation.
There's a second. Right. Any discussion? Seeing that all in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Anything else from administration?
Just a couple of quick upcoming events in our community. This, this weekend, there is a Bachi for breast cancer event. On Saturday, October 8th is Oktoberfest. On Saturday, October 28th, there's going to be DI and the Eagles trick-or-treating event downtown. On November 4th is the Wine Walk and then everyone's favorite, the 18th is a, is the light-up night with the parade and everything. And there's gonna be some other additional sort of new events that weekend following it. There's more information coming out from BI about that. And all of this is on DI's social media as well. When is the Hong Kong Parade? October 1st. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Rather major impact on downtown India.
That's it for us.
Community development. To add to the presentation?
I have nothing to add except we have our meeting on this Thursday.
As will everybody be. All the committees.
One announcement, our Get Solar program application was approved. So we got accepted into the program. Kyle's actually going to be with the county and the director, Solar. Yeah, on the radio on Friday. So listen to him. Commercial and some nonprofit. And like whoever wants to be involved kind of form of a committee and start moving forward with it. And then the only thing else, on Thursday, I'll be in Delmont all day for a workshop for our health insurance. And I'll be getting our legal information. So I'm a little nervous, but we'll find out. That's one of the biggest budget line items in our budget. Yeah. That's it. That's all I have. Great job on your report, please, chief.
Any questions for the manager?
Just would reiterate that homecoming is around the corner. There's an all stakeholders meeting for the IAC committee that's taking place September 27th. Oh, I'm sorry. As an, as an all pass. There will certainly be a presence of the Indiana Borough Police Department. And we just encourage our residents that if they have concerns, 24 hours a day, seven days a week to call us and let us respond and handle any issues that they may have over a weekend that traditionally sees an influx of both students and adults.
Be involved too, and they will have their horses. Okay. You're on.
Nicole, which am I talking about?
Yes.
Should have gotten a copy of the very simplistic ordinance on the redistricting. Now, this is only redistricting. This is not the reduction of the wards. That will be a separate. That'll be a separate ordinance that we have to do.
The reduction of the council?
What did I say?
You said the reduction of the wards.
Sorry, this reduces the wards council, number of council from 12 to eight will be the next piece of legislation that comes your way. But I wanted to get this done first. You know, it's very simplistic. There's very few municipalities that have done this. Most of what I've found is their ordinances are shifting the boundary lines. You know, they're not reducing from four wards to, they're just shifting. And we've, you know, the ad hoc committee didn't feel that that would be in our best interest, given the makeup and demographics. So obviously, this just got presented to you today. If you want to take this, chew on it, get back with any chance. Normally, this would go to your administration committee, right? So if you wanted to go through that process, that's fine. And then they can make any changes, corrections, input thoughts. And at the same time, then hopefully by in two weeks, I will have the other ordinance for the reduction of council and how we're going to accomplish that. But I know this just got sprung on you today, so I'm not, you know, not expecting any huge discussion or debate, but you know, obviously if there's something glaring that you need changed right away, let me know. But if not, send that through your admin and let them bring it back. By that.
Four years, two years from now, we see that there are some issues or something that we were unforeseen.
You can review it at any time, but you have to review it every ten. When the decennial, and, and I just, I put in there from time to time, it can be reviewed. That gives you the.
Is that legally binding?
It is, actually. Yes. From time to time, but no, no longer than 10 years, I believe, is what I, based on the decennial census. Yeah, it's number five.
Where we have written in the, make sure the map, like where we have North Seventh to Philly is where you guys definitely, the wording of the.
The other option, and I talked to Nicole about this. You know, yes, could we spell out from this street to this street, this street to this street, that street to that? I think the map as appended would be the better way to do it. But if you want it written out, we can do that. It's up to you guys. I mean.
Announcement? How do you do that?
Well, obviously, they've been part of the process throughout. We would hope that they would continue to be. But normally, what I've, what I've seen a few other municipalities do is once this takes effect, you know, once you guys vote on it and it's approved, then we would send out some sort of a notice. I've seen other municipalities do that, just notifying them that, hey, you, you used to be in fourth ward, but now we're in the eastern ward or the western ward. Or if you want to call it ward one, ward two. I called it east-west because I didn't, nobody had told me what you want to call them. And because that's kind of how we divided it. So we can, we can do it however you'd like. We can do it word one. We can do it word two.
Do you think that part needs to be in this ordinance, what we're calling it, or is that not? I mean, do we need to make the decision?
The western wards population and the eastern wards population is.
Using for people, if you said warden one and two, and they've been in two, they might not understand. I mean, it's minor, I would say, but.
From the. Yeah. Bro code, all wards shall be numbered and composed.
I like it.
But I did find it interesting people understand geography. Oh, I think we have. Because.
They have east middle and west. I don't know.
Read the code. It says all words in the borough shall be numbered and comprised of compact and contiguous territory. So might be better to make, make it one and two. Does anybody have a preference, which is? I would, I would, I would think so, Gerald, but there's been crazier things that have happened.
But I know people start referring to it as east and west.
Yeah.
To do that.
And we might as well sort of commonly sort of refer to this east and west.
We can make it official. We can put one parentheses, west, two parentheses, east.
Yes.
Well, no, I think you gotta go, if you go west to east. Using Gerald, you know, we read.
But we're number one.
Since this has been done in the past, not in, in, in other municipalities, now we have social media with our press and everybody here. I think between social media, press, and if we do some mailings to peoples, the houses, we should be able to cover everybody.
We'll have to work with the county to.
Right, right.
Determine all that.
Yes. Yeah, because once this passes, then we got to take it to the county. They have to figure out how they're going to reapportion voting and precincts and.
When, when, when would be the earliest that people would be voting in this new?
Twenty-three.
There's a May primary.
Primary of twenty-three.
Forty-year and they have a whole year to work on it. Or next year, they'll have to work on our primary. So they have a few months.
Where they have to, all they really have to figure out is they could keep all the same precincts. That doesn't matter for them. What they would have to potentially change would be your, the council members that are running.
Right. But for a voter's experience, they'll likely go to their same precinct, their same voting, same polling place.
You would, you would, you would think so. Some may change.
Philadelphia has changed orders to state this.
Right. Those would be the only people that might have to go to a new.
Students who don't know.
Yeah.
Who don't know where anything is on earth.
That out.
Not many people have to change, fortunately.
It, it, it would seem like it would probably behoove us to use our, you know, our communication strategy. Pretty decent and kind of follow, do kind of a steady. This is going to happen. You know, if the county sends out new information, we follow it up with, hey, you got something from the county. It's important. Just, you know, do a steady, a little bit of a steady drumbeat and maybe a mailer too.
Everyone is aware that when we vote.
Yeah.
Time for people to weigh in.
The phone calls about when is my trash pickup now?
Yeah.
So if we could get out ahead of, and I don't care if we, like, because I think, I think we discussed previously, we're basically going to keep trash pickup schedule and limb, limb and leaf. Yeah. So it, it might just be a matter of changing, like you were in ward one through four. We're not calling them zones, but you know, zone one through four, your pickup is, you know, I just, but get out in front, like, nobody panic. Everything stays the same, right? It's Indiana. Everything stays the same unless you want it to change. And so, I think that, I think just to be.
Exactly.
A chance, the other one would be ready for admin next week.
Monday?
Monday.
Hey.
I can, I can draft. I don't want to make a promise. I can do, I will give every effort to have a draft to admin by Tuesday. Is that reasonable? I will try to have a draft to admin by Tuesday. No, I agree.
And obviously, that's all you can say, right? But.
I, I just don't want to say absolutely positively, because I know I have, the next two days, I will not be in my office. I will be in court every day of basically every minute.
If we missed, if it has to go through admin, which I remember bringing up last time, and I was told it was wrong. Okay. If it did go to admin for any, any reason, and we missed this cycle, we would be at the absolute last possible moment to approve it. It'd be, it'd be in December.
Be done by the October meeting, so we could look at it then with this. That way we can all, we can still vote on them together to advertise if it's.
Due diligent effort to have it to admin by next Tuesday.
Minimum of every 10 years after the publication. So basically, we're giving ourselves, if the next census comes out in 2030 or 2031, we're giving ourselves 10 years after that to.
I'm sorry. It's at a minimum of every 10 years. It would be based on the decennial. Do you want me to change that? Instead of after, I would say every 10 years. Because it, it comes, it goes, it comes after the publication, like the publication happened in 21.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's.
So.
Just putting a comma after years. That amendment of every 10 years, comma, after the publication of the decennial census.
They're here.
Okay. Yeah, and it needs to be tied with that census.
Right.
Yeah, because I don't think we want to go another 40 years before we engage in this activity.
Before people have to file for running.
The, yeah, the other ordinance is very important.
Right.
We know exactly.
Okay.
Anything else?
I have nothing else.
Okay. Well, since the chief took the only item that I had in my department. About homecoming. Go out and have a good time. They've asked me once again to be one of the judges of the floats. And I know when I was still working on getting up at eight o'clock was no big deal, but.
Uh, no reports. I got in trouble last time, so I'm not saying anything. Between six to nine, is it? Gee, I, I, you were right. It's going to be a hooters. You're right. I'm lost in the conversation.
That's okay.
Yeah, this is the.
I said, oh. You want, is it old or is it new?
Figure out who ever, because everybody's coming to different committees.
Oh, about the parking. Oh, I thought, okay, so I would like to, I don't know if it's new or old or whatever it is, it's business though. I have heard last night that some folks that are upset about parking are coming to the public safety committee meeting. And we've had a variety of people come to the admin committee meeting. I'd like to suggest that if people want to talk about that, we drive them to the admin committee. Because we are the ones that handled the ordinance in general, and we have already had a group of business owners come in to speak with us. What I'm worried about is multiple committees. And then if we, then we start playing a game of telephone. And one person says something just a touch different than someone else. Next thing you know, the rumor mill starts. And I do feel like we might be starting to get into a tangled mess if we have too many, obviously, the public can come to any meeting they want, right? They can come and speak their mind and have a public comment. But if we are specifically encouraging, come to a specific meeting, I do think that would make the most sense.
I think where the fusion comes in, public is at one point up until about a year ago, public safety was in charge of parking and now we're not. So, yeah.
Have a slight, I don't want to say unified, that's not the right word, but I think you guys understand what I mean. Rather than multiple committees all saying slightly, although they may be possibly intending to be the same thing.
Just send them to head.
Yeah. So.
Any other old business? I think parking is old business, as old as cars. Any new business?
This thing as well. So it's already been a little bit of time, but before it gets too far gone, I wanted to possibly bring up the committee restructuring, like we had alluded to. And before too much time has gone past, where some of that information would get even more stale, because we talked to a lot of different boroughs, about how they did a lot of different things. I don't know if it makes sense, I don't know, Casey, if you recorded that specifically with different people's committees. But anyway, I'd like to revisit our committee structure in general. And I know that we had already talked about that, and so I'm just bringing it up again. So I don't know if that's new or old, but it's business.
Yeah, I've been thinking about what the best way to, I'd like to get a sense from everybody what you like or dislike about, and what things that you would like to try out. I think we need to kind of like put all the ideas on the table and sort through, which might be a longer process, but.
So we do not need an ordinance for that, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we're looking for, yeah, the end of next year.
Twenty twenty-three.
Change it whenever we want it. Right.
The council won't change until your demographic.
Start dropping after 2023.
End of 2024.
Love it specifically, which I didn't think necessarily mattered, based on the size of council. Anyway, and maybe it does. So and I'm just bringing it up, right? Maybe I'm, maybe I'm too early. Anyway, and maybe it does. And I'm just bringing it up, right? Maybe I'm, maybe I'm too early, but.
Ad hoc committee could do this again, or, or we could have people.
Is it a, so.
With, you know, I'll come up with some questions and you guys can give answers and we can meet again and kind of figure out what the different possibilities are.
Going from 12 to eight, that's the, that's the current plan, and that's the ordinance that we're going to look at next time. So we are trying to figure out a committee, let me just make sure I understand your question, trying to figure out what will the committee structure look like when there's eight of us rather than 12? I wonder if there's input from the staff that get here, because a lot of, I mean, what's the, what's the most convenient way for staff to interact? Because I know one of the challenges now is all the meetings, 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 meetings. So is there a committee structure that kind of best utilizes their time to get information to the elected body?
Clearfield, for example, had two meetings a month. So there are, there are boroughs out there that have significantly less meetings than we do. It's, you know, so reaching out and gathering some more information, who's on what, how many committees is each individual on, et cetera, would be. That's the idea of what I'm trying to bring up, I guess. Before it gets too far stale and we forget any of that information.
Like, when there's only eight people at the table, we'll have to do something different, because there's not enough people to fill the current, current structure. So we want to, we want to design an eight-person structure.
We wanted to. I'm thinking from a scheduling perspective, because there are a lot of meetings, like you said, if there is a possible way to streamline that, I think it should be at least thought about. It doesn't mean anything has to happen. For a while, so that when we go to eight, we kind of have a template already in place, rather than waiting for potentially new council members. Here you go, here's your problem, figure it out. See ya, right?
Is it, do we, do we go immediately in, in January of 23?
Eight in this structure. Yeah, it was only the seven that we had stepped. Yeah. Twenty twenty-four.
Right, I'm sorry.
Twenty twenty-four. Because what we did is then in the next election, the eastern side is then you have a two-year instead of, because you have five right now.
Eight immediately. So we need to be set with a committee structure before January 2024.
It out, but I know there's been some, a lot of ideas from, from folks about, you know, maybe there's an east and west meeting, maybe there's other sorts of things.
So it seems like it would be. It makes sense for the ad hoc committee to kind of do a similar process, work with staff, figure out what the recommendation is.
One of the things the ad hoc committee could look at is right now, the way we're structured, we all have to attend three meetings. Maybe do everything in two or three meetings.
Go, like hear from the staff directly, right?
I think that's the most important.
Yeah.
So it's to help implement the people of council, being able to be more informed without having to go to.
Better way, and I would totally be ready to hear a recommendation from the same committee about like what makes sense.
Plan, but first I think meeting with staff to figure out what is they need from council, like necessary elements, like we don't. Like some of these committees in some of these boroughs are like, okay, there's a budget committee, and they meet for three months. And they have like, there's a number of committees, but they're just project based and they meet for short periods of time.
You would potentially, for example, free an admin, they didn't have to have an admin committee. They only had an ad hoc admin committee, right? That would be the spirit of something like that.
The public would participate maybe a little bit more if they know it's not drawn out. Yeah, there's like, after month after month, like every, you know, three Tuesdays or something, that's it.
There's a lot of ideas to be considered.
Basically, when we do the, when we do the redistricting, we're going to have to do the committees, so it's part of your unfinished. Definitely have to be prepared, yeah.
So part of me is like, you know, if we're going to have this massive shift anyways, you might as well shift the committee structure and the number of councils or at the same time.
So.
Hypothetically speaking, if there was, we're we're losing a lot of experience on the committee, on the council, right? Just period. It's going to happen, right? Some people may win their elections back, some people may not, some people may give in, not give in, decide they don't want to run again. That's what I'm trying to say. And so waiting until, right, the new council took place, I think would be a disservice to whoever the new council is. That's really.
Structure in place. That we can make a decision.
Pretty great.
Okay, that's, that'd be my, if we wanted, if we want to do a couple of like experiments next year, I guess, with budgeting coming on, everything else coming in the next couple of months here, like.
This year, I was kind of looking at, you know, next year is when we're gonna.
Work session to discuss it and kind of, you know, like you say, really talk it through.
Maybe we can meet at the beginning of the year or the end of this year, should talk about all the different ideas and we can lay them out.
So if we like, if there's a version we really like, maybe we run it for one month. If it's no good, then we scrap, you know.
Make the decision and sort of go with it.
I guess not step one necessarily, but this would be the beginning of that process, so.
Like people want the ad hoc committee to just take. Put some stuff together.
Anything else for the good of the order? Is there, do we have a motion?
Two for Owen Horn, but I think for the good of the order, everybody on council should turn out to the Indiana Playhouse on Friday or Saturday night on 7:30 or 2 o'clock on Sunday afternoon and watch Sharon perform brilliantly in the Sweet Delilah Swim Club. Because if you ever want to see a celebration of community and love and respect, this is that. And the cast is dynamite. I'm not in it.
I went to it on opening night and it was fantastic. It was. Yeah. And you can attest, I wear some cool outfits, huh? Yeah, that's all the more I'll say. Thank you, Sarah.